Memory top on my new boat, so man, that was nice out there when it was hot to get something at least out of the direct sun and then have a little bit of a breeze coming through.
We're supposed to fish tomorrow night, but I don't know if I've gotten away here. It's gonna be.
It's not worth it. And humid, and now it's so much humid.
You guys are online, you know. I will call a meeting order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody was, everybody was waiting for Kevin, Kevin to say his fishing, fishing place.
There's no shot.
Nothing to tell.
We'll have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Waller?
Yes.
Tommy Kellicson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Okay, citizen comments. First, Chris is here and I guess we can have, I don't know if you have some comments, Chris, or if you just want to answer questions or?
Well, I'm kind of bewildered for, you know, this isn't meant to sound negative in a way, but for six months I've been going through this with Cheryl out at Economic Development. And then it falls through, do I have now, do I have the power to write or what do I have to list my property? Or what is it? Because I kind of understood that with what was going on with the Riley brothers to do this exchange type of deal. Well, I was in a situation where I, I mean, I'm aware of properties in terms of renting and so forth. But I was kind of like I had been kind of out of those groups, I don't, you know, in a sense, even though I was talking with Cheryl and she was explaining things, you know, back to, you know, and then she got, I felt like I didn't, she was like, I felt like I didn't, I felt like I had so few options because they tell me it's, oh, if you, the environmental people come in and test the ground and that while there hasn't been any chemical fair for years, that it would cost me, I'm keen thousands of dollars to do something with the, you know, to get the property straightened out. I need to find somebody I can talk to that would know about this type of thing. To know if I can go to one of the, like I say, one of the local realtors and get some advice that way. You know, to say, okay, this is what would happen. I mean, they were down to talking about the lead in the paint and, oh, that whole building, well, of course, there was, I'm sure there's painting, they had lead base in it. It's only, what is it, maybe six years old. So I kind of had a loss as to what my options are and what I do. I mean, I want out of that building bad as you want that building down, believe me. You know, it's not that I'm trying to put on my brakes and Saturday and Sunday again, when I did after delivering flowers to the funeral home, et cetera, packing up stuff, throwing stuff away and, you know, there's, you know, just for me, there's forty years and you gotta stop and think it's been there since nineteen thirty-three and I could tell you, there's some things in there I think have been there since nineteen thirty-three. I found some things there and go, that's been here that long, you know, I can throw it. So I'm, I'm in some, some feeling that I need some guidance as to what my options are and what I can do to get myself, you know, get this straightened out. It's just, it gets a little overwhelming some days and since I can't drink, I don't know what I would do. I mean, options are. So like I said, anybody here that can say, well, go talk to this person, maybe probably be a good one to talk to or something like this, you know, to give me a way into something that would be a feasible, workable thing for all of us, that type of deal. But the net I was going to wait till after tonight and then I was going to call Cheryl to go out there and see her again and see what, what her feelings are, you know, about with the economic development part of it and that type of thing again. But during me, it was, I need just to say, my time was not my time for that one.
Sure. Thanks, Chris. We, we do have a memo from Blaine and, and Blaine kind of lays it out pretty good on, on what potential solutions that we have. Counsel, I guess, you know, we need to talk about it, we need to inform Chris, you know, what, if anything, that we plan on doing or that we'd like to see done. Quite frankly, I guess I'll kind of start that first and foremost, Chris, I, I am concerned for you. I am concerned for your business and of course, I'm concerned about the building and the people that enter the building and the passersby's. That's, that's really what it is and probably in that order, I'm concerned for you and your business mainly. But, you know, one of our options, of course, is to do nothing and, and let you continue on doing, obviously, you have been doing something to try to proceed with this, so you know, that, that is certainly one of our options. I'll open it up for the other counsel to. Yes, sure.
I, you can do nothing, but no, that is, you know, don't get me to, or take me to think, thinking that I want to do nothing. I, I honestly want to get out of that place. And, you know, but it's a matter of where do I start to get out of that place?
Right. And Chris, the, the do nothing is, was not pointed towards you.
No, no, no.
It's, it's the council could, could do nothing.
I want, I'd rather have you guys say, okay, here's some options.
Okay.
Get this rolling so that I know, so now I have, now my time is a lot more free during, you know, the next couple of months. And I want to, frankly, I was hoping everything would have been settled so I'd be out of there by fall at the late, you know, by September type of deal so that.
Sure.
But, you know, like I said, it isn't easy when you're running to Starbucks, you're running to Elbe Lake with flowers, you know, it takes, it takes time and and like I said, I, some of that stuff, you know, like I said, I'm starting to go through it and throwing and that type of deal. That, you know, I unfortunately, I'm the type of person, when I go through it, I go through it, you know, I'm not one, it took me all, all summer to get through my mom's house, of course, there was fifty years there too. But, you know, I, I, I can look at it and I throw it, you know, if I haven't used it or needed it, then I throw it and that type of deal, but it's, it's really difficult.
Yes, for sure.
Well, I guess I can start. You know, first of all, I, I think I went on record last meeting, Chris, and said, you know, I think I can speak for the rest of the council, you know, we're not in the business of putting people out of business. And, you know, you're a very talented botanist, you've, you've had a very successful business over the years and, you know, I think the city council has been more than fair to this point with you as far as, you know, trying to work with you and come up with a solution. You know, but there, there gets to a point where we have to make a decision to do something to push this thing forward as you kind of had alluded to, so, you know, in my, I guess my position is I, I don't think doing nothing is really an option. I think we have to do something for, not only for your benefit, but for the benefit of your customers and public safety, you know, because, you know, I think the last thing any of us want is for somebody to enter your building and have something happen. So, and that is a real, it always has been kind of a real concern of mine, so, you know, that being said, you know, one of the things I think we can do as a city is take the property over, correct Blaine, and then it would have to be, you know, then we would be responsible to demo the property for you on your behalf and that would be at a city expense. Now, when you say you want out of there, I don't know what you're thinking or what, you know, what you exactly mean by that. But, you know, really, there, the options are pretty clear. I mean, you either move to a different location and that property goes away and if that's the case, I don't know if you're in a position to pay to have the, the building taken down and demoed because it's, it's going to be a fairly costly adventure to do that and I, Blaine gave us an estimate, it's roughly a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to just, you know, take down the building, so, you know, you're talking about a lot of money and so I don't know if you're in a position to pay for that or if you want us to do that for you or, or just what, you know, so I just, hopefully that'll kickstart the conversation here, but.
While you're, the council is aware of what was going on with Riley brothers and, and my position, et cetera, right?
No.
No, not really.
We're not aware of any.
So that's the, the Stevens County Economic Improvement Commission, they operate in a different environment, so all of that information was pretty much confidential within the Economic Improvement Commission. The only thing is when the deal fell through and the building was sold to somebody else, then I notified the council. What I said was Economic Development was working with you on a potential solution to getting you out of that building.
See, that's why I said, really, I felt like my hands had been tied for this time because they were going to, and I, I said, it's not my forgery, this kind of thing. They told me that Riley brothers were, were going to exchange buildings with me. They would take over that property, I would get this karate building one. Okay, that part, that part I kind of grasp, but then it came up to that the property would have to be turned over to the city so that when Riley brothers tore down the building, that would be a community improvement of the property. The government would come in and say, here's some money to tear down the building. And first off, at that point, there were four of us on the building. My mother is still on it, myself, my brother and my sister. My brother and sister had been talking about it first since before mom died. They threw their names off the property, so the property is now in my deceased mother's name and mine. But like I said, oh, I can't go looking for another place, I can't do this type of thing because only the, the only option I was given was to go into the karate building because they would trade that property with mine. Well, I went down and saw the property, the, I don't know, Mexican building, because they had a Mexican food store, I think, in there. There was two public bathrooms for the place and for men, one for men and one for women. The men's bathroom, the ceiling was hanging down, the tile was all tore up and it looked like it had never been cleaned. In every room, there were one, if not two, plug-in like outlets with as many as six or seven jacks hanging out of them. You go upstairs and that was, that's where they were saying it was such a nice property for me because I could live upstairs. Well, it was about as long as this bit of room and probably from here to there wide. Then you opened up cupboard doors and there were rods coming out of the ceiling down into the other part of the ceiling, so that part was totally non-existent. The place they wanted me to have my bedroom had the furnace in it and I mean, if they couldn't, the stairways, you couldn't have gotten a couch up there, let alone a refrigerator or any kind of thing to live with. And so that's what was, what was presented to me. And, oh, they were going to fix all that. Well, we opened, the, one of the women that worked with me went down there with me when they were showing it to us. And we opened the side windows, I don't know if you're familiar with the building, but if you drive up the ramp into the bank parking lot with windows all along, we opened two of them, she opened one and I opened one. And she had to go outside and shovel to get them to go full. And this was, this was what I was being offered in exchange for the, my rundown building. And I, I wasn't said, told I could do anything other than accept that building. That was what they were going to offer me, nothing else. And I mean, a building on would be all right, but I, I mean, I don't know who would have rented a bill or bought that in that condition. You know, that type of thing. And so that's where I had been for, what, say, September last year, I don't know, just when we started all this, but now that, so now my question is, what, what do I do? You mentioned that you guys could take it over. Well, what, now I have to have that explained to me as to what that does to me. Does that say, here, take your suitcase and go over? Like I said, people are talking around me more than to me, I think, is what I'm trying to say, you know? And I feel, like I said, I feel like an outsider standing in when it came to that option that was given to me. And don't, don't get upset with Cheryl, because she was very good to try to help me. But she didn't have any options either, actually, this is what was presented to her, you know, type deal.
Yeah, so she was just trying to help you find a place. So, so to answer your question, you're in a building that should be condemned and nobody should be in it. Just, just so that's clear to you, in our mind, it should be condemned, nobody should be in it and in the end, a good option might be for you to just sign the building over to us and let us take care of it. What does that mean for you? It means you have to go somewhere else. You can't stay in a condemned building. So, so, and that, you know, that's, that's the dilemma that the city council has is that, you know, there's been a hole in the roof for how long that isn't getting patched?
Yeah, because my money is very important to me and that it does not come easy. You know, I'm, I'm not, you know, a, by any means, a well-to-do person, I mean, that type of deal. I have struggled and now things are getting, are getting a little better than, and not to fault you guys because I know what you're saying is true. But after what went on last fall, there was the, the article in the paper about worried the building would fall down on people and that, while it hit the, the exterior walls and that type of thing already in poor shape and that, I, like I said, I'm not handling that part. But it isn't going to fall. I mean, there's beams, you know, the fourteen by two inch beams that run every twelve inches across the interior of that building. But like I said, I, I can't afford to fix it, nor would it be worth it if our assignment's there. But like when I, so I signed the papers and turned the property over to you and you, you take the property and that, that leaves me have, like, what I'm trying to say is, would I be able just to take my stuff and get out of there and try to open another, in another place? Rent another air building? Or, you know, that's what I'm, I'm kind of wondering, is that my option to start doing that so I can get things, you know, rolling for myself?
Yeah, I, I think that's exactly what we're talking about is you should be looking for another place for you to go and set up. I mean, you have a skill that is highly desirable by a lot of people. But, but you're, you're doing that skill in a place that, and I understand it because you're comfortable, like, well, he said it's really warm, you know, given the, the weather, but, but it's your space. You've been working in that space for all those years and you're comfortable with things coming in and things going out and, and loading and all that kind of stuff, but, but that building is not getting any better and the, the one thing I would say, just so it's clear, you know, when we're talking about the, the potential building swap and what might have happened, you know, there, there, there's funds that are available for doing redevelopment projects because there's interest in that site. I think you've been probably approached in the past by at least a couple individuals that were interested in that, that corner or that spot and maybe acquiring that property because it is on Main Street and it's desirable and if we get a grant that can help remediate any issues that are in there, I, you know, there's talk about there might be an underground tank there. And so that would have to be done. There's maybe asbestos, there's maybe lead paint, but those are all things that we can do as part of a grant program with grant money to tear a property down and then to turn it over to somebody to develop it and that's what Riley's do. They develop properties. And, and that's how that works with the government, you know? But just to go ahead and tear down a building and clear that off and not have a kind of a follow-on project makes it more difficult. And that's one of the things that we'd have to look at and Cheryl's been looking at all that stuff and, and she had some good thoughts in that and obviously, you didn't like the spot, you know, that was being suggested and that's totally up to you.
Well, I didn't like it, Blaine. I didn't like the condition.
Right.
I was, I got the feeling that you take this as is, you know? I never once talked, I got to talk to anybody out there, you know, what, what their plans are or what their, and I don't care what they do, they could put a plague around it. I don't care what they do with it after I'm out of it. But don't try to hoodwink me into thinking that that was a super deal in that building when it was in that condition and you were showing it to me, you know, to me, I thought they should have made an effort at least to have, you know, something kind of straightened out so that when I went in, I would leave a little bit more impressed than that.
I've never been in that building. Were you thinking then you would just, you would operate your business out of that building and then live there too? Is that correct?
Well, that's what they were trying to sell me with. But to give you an idea, they had a one room that if you've never been in there, it, there's a main, big main area and then on the side, there were four, I believe it was four, or at least three rooms, kind of offices. The one was, it had installed in it a couple of big sinks. Well, I wasn't adverse to the big sinks because they were for building, et cetera, et cetera. Over in the corner by the, you walked in the door and over here was an area that had a cement ledge about this big. It went in us maybe about, well, between the corner of the wall and the door, I suppose, maybe two feet and there was this ridge. And I was told, see, you could just hang a shower curtain here and you could have your, a shower. How the hell am I going to have my shower down in my business? I'm sorry. And I deserved better than where they rinsed out their, their buckets when they wash them off the floor and that's what that was. And that was supposed to be my shower.
Well, that was an option, obviously, that Cheryl or somebody there with the economic development had for you, but we go, we go back to when we started like in September or last fall and we were, we couldn't do nothing over the winter months. We've been through COVID. It's been a tough time on everybody, but we need, that was an option presented to you by somebody, if Riley's or whoever it was. But that's an option, you know, for us or for the economic development to, to give you a option, but, you know, for you to find something on your own or if we can help you further, but we haven't made any progress. We're sitting basically where we were in September and we need to make some progress to get things moving, so, I mean, that's, that's where we're at is to.
But like I said, please don't make me think that I'm, you know, upset with you folks like that I, I just feel like, oh, he's an idiot, he'll take anything. Really, I mean, don't, come on, how many people, how many homes did you guys buy that told you you had to turn a mop corner into a shower? You know, I'm sorry and making an option, but they should have realized it isn't an option. Really, that's not an option to me, that's, you know, I could go down and get a box from McGinnis and Lewis in the corner.
Chris, it, it may have been an option for your business. The building may have been an option for your business. Certainly, they tried to sell it to you as an apartment also and, and I, I rented that, that building for my business and yeah, there's no way I would live in that building with the business. It just was not set up that way. And everything that you said, I totally agree with because I was there, I know what, what's in that building. Everything that you said is absolutely right. I, and I, I'm sorry that they tried to sell it to you as that, but the building itself would have been, I think, an option for you for your business.
Oh, I totally, I have no problem with that.
So anyway, so, so that's, that's water over the dam. I guess, you know, for you to explore or cer, you certainly are of every right, you own the property, you, you own the business. You have every right to find another location and move your business. If there's anything that the city can do to help, you know, Blaine offered that perhaps the city could take the building over after you're gone and, and just take care of it. That would be off of your plate.
That's, to me, sounds like an option that gives me some option.
Right.
But see, I, I felt trapped in this situation and that's what everybody that knew what was going on, my family and so forth. They said, well, you've got your partner into this thing, you don't have any options. I said, no. I said, I'd been told that if the government comes in and does a test and finds something in, in the soil, which they didn't do, which they didn't find when they built Super America originally, because they came over to test my, my soil too to see if there was any fuel residue or that deal. Like I said, I know I probably seem to you guys like I don't, didn't, wasn't worried about it and didn't care or thought it was just a joke, but I, I certainly have not. You don't get to weigh fully dressed a hundred and fifteen pounds when you used to weigh a hundred and sixty-five without something going on. And that's where last I found it, it was where I could have. So I mean, I'd really hope.
Well.
Any help that I can get from you, please.
Blaine, is this, is this something that we should have a work session and perhaps invite the, the SEIC and anyone else involved, Aaron, and, and just kind of look at Chris's options, look at our options and, you know, we don't necessarily have to spread it out, right, at a council meeting until we come up with some sort of agreement.
Well, I think, I think what you do is go back to Cheryl, you know, because what I'm hearing from you, if I'm correct, is that you'd be interested in sitting down and talking about an option of maybe the city stepping in and taking over the property.
Yeah, that part.
We, and we could do that. We could sit down and do that with you.
We, and we could do that. We could sit down and do that with you, uh, and then kind of show you how that works.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
But, but the biggest issue is you need to find a place to live and you need to find a place for your business. And if, and if you, if you walk out the door today, not understanding that that's what you should be doing next, where am I going to live? Because you can't keep living in that building.
Well, no, I, I agree with you.
And you can't keep running your business in that building. So.
So I watch at this.
I mean, there's, there's assistance for both of those. I mean, there's a housing authority that can find you a place to live. There's a economic development authority that can find you a place to go with your business. But I think what happened was Cheryl was trying to do what she thought you wanted was to keep them the same the way you have it now.
I totally, we talked about that, yeah, we did. And I said, it, I mean, uh, there was really no way that I would see any place where that would be a feasible deal.
Right.
Other than unless I bought a building downtown and I got told, Cheryl, at my age, I didn't want 30 years, 30 years of loan. I had a mortgage to pay off. God, my mother didn't get that old. She got it.
Well, I agree with what Blaine just said. You want out of the building. We want you out of the building because it's a hazard to you, your customers and the people. And potentially you're willing to turn it over for us to do something to help get rid of the problem. And just coming in here and talking with us, so we're face to face, so we all feel a lot better about dealing with each other. When we can talk with you face to face and if we have a question for you, we can ask it. And the same from you to us. So thank you so much for coming in and sitting down with us and visiting with us. But I think that's the option for us, to find you a place to live, a place to do your business. And then it sounds like you're agreeable to turn the property over so that we can help get rid of the problem.
Yes, as long as it's, like I said, long as I'm involved and I feel like I'm doing something. I have felt like outside of me cleaning in there and like I said, I, I still have got a lot to do. But I mean, that's, that's my problem, not yours.
Yeah.
But see, I, the thing is, I don't want to be told, okay, you've got 30. You know, I, I, I appreciate a time limit. I have no problem with that, but I want a realistic one. So that I can live with myself and live with that.
Well, and, and I would just tell you this, Chris, we can't do that to you. You know, that's one of the options that the city council had is, is, you know, if, if we can't come to an agreement with you on what to do with it together, because it has to be together, you know, where we could sign off on an agreement, then we'd have to go to court, district court. We don't want to do that. Nobody's, I, you know, I just want to clear up one thing. Nobody's said a word about any kind of testing on your property. You know, that's not something that we've ever talked about.
Cheryl told me that.
Well.
That it was a semi-agricultural business, the government requires it.
Yeah, well, so part of what we would do if we took over the property and before we ever tore down the building, we'd have to have an environmental assessment done on it. We'd have to identify all the hazards. Luckily, we, we know of a company in Morris that can help us with some of that, just like they did with the elementary school when we took over that property. But at the same time, um, you know, we don't want to go to court.
Oh, I don't know.
Because that's the only way we would get authority to step in and do anything without your permission. Uh, but that is an option, you know, if, 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 if for some reason we can't come to an agreement, that, that is an option that the city council has to try to get something done. But let's sit down, let's talk, we'll figure out, you know, we'll, we'll tell you what we're talking about. Because I've done these before. I did one up in Breckenridge where we sat down with the property owner and they'd signed over a piece of property. They had no ability whatsoever to tear down. That was like a fourplex or an eightplex. And, uh, but we do have options because we, as a government, we have the availability of redevelopment funds and stuff like that can help us take care of those buildings, you know, and, and that's going to get you out from under the problem. You know, that you have.
There are certain questions that I still have and it's nothing major. It's just to feel kind of feeling some length. But like I mentioned before, and no, no offense to you folks, I appreciate what you do. But I would like to be in a thing where I can talk to you and not feel like it's going to end up as public business. I am a very private person and it's, like I said, it's not meant to be insulting to anybody, but I do not share a wealth. I have more people come out and come in and say, well, we can tell you this because we know it won't go anywhere. And it doesn't because I do not, I am not one to, you know? So if there's a time or a place or I could, a couple of us, you could explain a little bit more about this.
Yeah, we can do that.
I'm willing to do that. And like I said, it's just a.
Good.
Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Take care of yourself.
Yep.
You bet. We'll, we'll get through this together.
No, I, I hope so.
All right.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, Mr. Quon, we have insurance coming up.
Favorite topic. Would you like me to go through the microphone?
That would be wonderful, yeah. It just, it helps record on the recording.
Well, first off, great to see everybody in person. It's, uh, we do quite a few of those who are, are quiet.
With no mask.
With no mask, it still felt weird right away, but it's, it's great and I hope we're on a continued trend towards that way. And certainly if you want to start out with, with commending you and it's difficult to lead any organization, let, let a large one such as a city, especially through COVID. So all the extra thought, extra planning that goes into it. Commend you for taking the time to do that because it's really important in many ways relates to insurance and, and what we talked about, what we manage in our side for, for your city and all those that we work with. So you don't have to have in front of you. I'll reference some points, but we have our, our executive summary letter that we include in our packets. And it's really a high level last year versus this year. Was there changes? And if there was change, why? What, what drove the change? If there are premium differences, any coverage changes? And then, and then tie it back to, you know, what are some of the factors that we're dealing with in, in the insurance market with relates to cities and to insurance at large? So, uh, first off, so you are with the Leggins of Insurance, uh, Insurance Trust, which you and, and essentially the entire state and so did the cities. And, um, they have taken COVID into consideration in meaning that they really have not done much at all, great differences when the overall insurance industry hasn't really asked. Because if you think of some of these factors, all the catastrophic storms, the fires, tornadoes, it's the first time in history that Riden has been over a billion dollars paid out of all the civil unrest. Those things catch up and those things come in the form of great pressures. So we don't see that as much with league policies, which is very positive. And so your, your two changes really comes down to an increase in your property due to some, some property limit increases, which is very merited in today's rising cost of construction. Uh, but the other bigger piece is, uh, work comp. And, and we're on the wrong side of a couple of claims that they do just happen. And the calculation from the state is catching up to us this year. So we'll talk about that and, and different things that you can think about, how you manage that all the time. Uh, so you, you can see broken down there, uh, and we'll go by line by line. But property, you'll see an increase against some of the industry pressures, but also because of the rate or because of the limit increase, um, the league does an inflationary increase based on today's cost of construction to, uh, to get as close as we can to if a building goes down, number replacement with today's dollars. The rest of the lines, equipment breakdown, liability, um, including airports in all the city, liquor liability, fireworks liability, uh, those are all essentially the same. A little uptick on a few of the lines. Your, uh, crime, crime, uh, crime coverage was down. Your auto was down about 3,200. Your excess liability was down. And you'll see the biggest driver of the premium change here is, is your work comp. And, uh, there's a little highlights on page two. They look to your experience modification factor and that increased to 1.21 to 1.26. Uh, and it goes corresponding payroll. But that makes a big difference. For many years, the city saw the benefits of a mod below 1.0 and received the credit as such, but there's three years that go to the calculation of your mod. So the 17, 18 policy period is essentially no claims, so that's no effect. The two years after that, you have, you have two bigger claims. And, uh, we're going to be relating to two incidents. And you look at those and talking with Blaine, you guys are doing what you should. You're having safety committee meetings. You're identifying root causes. You're identifying what we can do. Sometimes just things happen. We live in Minnesota, it's like a ball nice, things happen. So we look at that, what can be done proactively, which you are certainly, there's resources from your insurance company. Uh, but unfortunately, it's, it's, it's a calculation that corresponds to your claims. And, and that's just what's driving the, the change in premium. So the positive is this year, current term, really no claims. So that will get you towards a better calculation in the future, getting past these, these couple more challenging years. We also do, as we provide for our clients in, in, for cities, is we do a deductible work comp analysis. So if the league's policies have the ability to take a deductible, if it makes sense. Uh, and so we run it in five-year increments based on claims. And it doesn't make sense for you to take a deductible based on your claims. And I'll look at that each year and some it, it might, but so you, you're not on a, a zero deductible and that remains to be the best option for the city. Um, so unless, have, have any questions for the, the council's consideration? And approval is, is a total referral prop, um, policy premium of 366, 099.
Okay. Great. Any questions for Joel?
Just a scheduled mobile property, the expiring limit and then to the renewal limit there, there's a big difference. Can you explain what it is? It was over a million, 56 down to 742.
Yep.
Just what, what does that include or?
Yeah, so anything, 250 above is, it has to be formally scheduled in the policy. And there was just one item that was removed and I believe it was a wheel loader from what I have to call. So it was just a re, a reboot of something that was previously scheduled, is sold or have to look at the formal change. But there was just an item that was insured. It was no longer insured.
Okay. Cool. Any, uh, any other questions? Joel, as usual, thank you for your explanations and we're glad too that you're here in person and.
Appreciate it.
And so are we.
Just one quick side note. He provided, actually, we got an update from Bremer on our banking services and then Joel on our insurance. And he provided some really good information on data breaches. And, uh, we know that we're being fished all the time. Uh, and so actually he provided this so that we handed out to all the department heads. So it's not just the insurance part, it's information too that we get from him. So I appreciated that.
You bet. And that's the other side to look at, you know, we're, we're a large agency, benefit of being owned by the bank. But, uh, the policy's premiums, one side, but the proactive, the safety, the, uh, anything you could do to get best practice knowledge, those are what's going to drive performance from work comp to liability to cyber attacks. So the more, and then we'll constantly do that and help and get information. But appreciate you allowing Bremer to serve you and, uh, thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, Joel.
Thank you, Joel. So we have a resolution, um, accepting renewal proposal.
I will move, accepting the renewal proposal.
And I will second.
Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote on the resolution, please.
Councilman Resolvi, Wallers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Felixon?
Yes.
Mary D.
Yes. Thanks for waiting around, Joel.
Thanks, Joel.
Thanks, Joel.
Bye-bye. Okay, we have citizen, or, uh, no public hearings. We have reading and approval of minutes from May 25th, regular meeting.
I'll move approval of the regular meeting on May 25th, the minutes.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. And the same condensed version of the minutes.
I will move approval of the condensed minutes from the May 25 meeting.
I will second that. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. And the consent agenda consisting of the audit of city bills, the Morris transit report, gambling reports from the Morris Hockey, I will move approval of the items on the, on the consent agenda. And also the Eagles gambling report is in there also.
I'll second.
Any questions or any, uh, comments on any of the items?
I see the transit report. Looks like our passenger, uh, in May versus this year versus last year is about double.
Yeah.
It's good to see.
Yeah. And it's the, uh, the year-to-date is coming up.
Right.
Probably go by it in June, I would suspect. Any other, uh, questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. And we have city manager report.
Uh, three real quick items. East Sixth Street, they're, they're going to get some, um, I think they, Jim said half inch fines. Usually for patching, they have smaller fines, but there's some pretty big holes on East Sixth Street. So they're going to be doing that on Thursday. And that's one of the project areas for next.
Friday, my timeline got switched.
Friday.
Trees are coming down, not tomorrow, but Thursday and hopefully I get some next Friday. So, um, I didn't see you slide in there. Um, but, so that'll get taken care of because I know I, I drove on it yesterday and it's, it's really bad there. Uh, I noticed the guy from Precision Concrete was out doing estimates on, on cutting. Uh, I saw him over by the high school when I was in my backyard. And then City Hall opened up the front doors, you know, so if you want to come in now, you'll come to a window in the front and, and talk to Stacy right away. We're going to try that and see how that works. Otherwise, uh, we're getting back to normal. And I, I'm going to put a call into Hancock Concrete, see if they got a calendar. So then we can feel completely back to normal.
Yeah, right.
For 2121. But that's all I have unless you have questions.
I only have just one quick question regarding East Seventh Street. You know, I think last year or so we had a restriping question, um, you know, of, because the, as, and whether, the way the traffic is now, or, you know, you have the parking on the one side, people end up, you know, swerving out to go around the parked cars and, you know, try to stay in within the line. So there, is there any, is there anything we could do to re-stripe that so it maybe make it a little less confusing for people? But I don't know if that, is that possible?
We have three options. Go back to the way it was, we just had it, stripe down the middle and just leave parking on the one side striped the way it is and not strip on the other side. Or go back to the way we had it before it was redone and have it jumped over and have a wider parking spot on the other side. Those basically are our options.
I, I thought with this, there was something about state aid that we had to have that on both sides?
But then we got no parking on the one side, so it doesn't make any sense.
It doesn't make any sense to have that parking spot there with no parking sign. So I guess I, yeah, if we could go back to what it was.
I think that was.
We're just such creatures of habit. People were driving that anyway.
I mean, the nor- the normal thing to have is the center line down the center. But when you put the park, you know, it's like, and any road, any other road in town, there is no center line actually painted except on these state aid roads. And then people figure out that they have to go around cars. You know, there's plenty of room on Seventh Street for actually two cars to park and to have two driving lanes, technically according to the rules that they have. And we only have one side parking. But, and then at some point in the future, there could be a bike lane on that other side. You know, because people, you know, that's one of the things that we're looking at with safe routes to school. You know, is, you know, do we want bike lanes? But for right now, I think we're going to put the center line down the center and then just do the one side parking line and that's it.
Just don't do the other line.
Just don't do the other line on the other side because there's no parking over there.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Well, I drive. I don't know if technically I can fit down there, but I guess we'll just call it that if it's, yeah.
But people, I mean.
No.
No.
People, people move over, you know, people will move over. And if you don't, like, like you said, if you don't have that other parking line.
Yeah.
You know, then people will be more comfortable moving over. But I think it's really confusing. But I think it's really confusing, like out on Green River Road where the road curves over, because the line switches, comes in off the highway, it's in the middle, and then the road switches, and then you jog over, because there's parking on one side and not on the other side. You know, and and just have off-center center line just is odd.
Okay, good, thank you.
See how it goes then.
Try it, see what happens.
They, how long do they last, like, two years, the lines?
Um, well, it's simple, it went really well, so it might be played through next year or the year after, but.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
All right, anything else on the?
So what did we decide about the, what we were going to do with the building, Morrisville building? And again, it's not the business, it's the building.
Yes.
And I think that we need to keep separating that and and understanding that it's not his business. People can move their business wherever they want, it's the building. And we have rental ordinances for for landlords that they have to follow, you know, or they don't get their license, and then they can't rent, so I'm not, it's it's a hazard, and it needs to be condemned. And so where are we at with that? Because again, we just walked away, he walked away, and going, we'll get together. Or let's see if we could.
Well, I think, no, I think we're at a different level than we were before. So the next step is we try to negotiate obtaining ownership of the building with him. And if that, we will sit down with him, we will talk to him, we'll probably have Aaron to be involved with that. But we'll sit down with him, explain it to him, and then if he rejects it, then we come back to you and say, we sat down, we looked at it, he is not going to accept turning over that building to us. So now you have one option left.
That's the legal action.
And that's the to to go to district court and get permission, because it's not going to take much to condemn it. I mean, he knows that, you know, that's, he knows full well, you know, the the kind of shape it's in. But hopefully, he walked out of here, and and I'll probably stop by and talk to him tomorrow, and then just let him know that we're going to set up a meeting. There is some information, you know, that that's occurred behind closed doors, I'm not going to bring it out here. But but we can certainly sit down with him and have a discussion with him about, you know, what's what's in front of him now. But if he's, you know, one of the things I want to do is talk to the housing people. Because if anybody qualifies for housing, it must be him.
Well, again, we're not, I mean, that's, I know we're not, as you said, Kevin, not, but we're not concerned about, I mean, we are concerned, but the the building is is the biggest issue, that is why we're.
It is, but in order to.
Something with the building, we need to get.
In order, in order to negotiate a deal to get the building, it's going to have to involve a discussion behind closed doors about housing. You know, but at the same time, if it doesn't come to anything, then we just come back to you and say, that's not going to be the option that's going to work, and now you have one left, and what do you want to do?
You know, I I actually, for the first time, it looks like he's willing to just let that building go. It's the first time I've ever heard him admit that. So and I actually, you could just tell his nonverbals, it was like a, that was really a big weight off of his shoulders. Because, you know, he's, otherwise, he's staring at the prospect of trying to come up with a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of his own money to do that. And I, that's certainly, you could just, I just, my my impression was that he wants it, he wants to be got out of there just as much as we do, so.
Well, if the building fell down tomorrow, I would be back at the city council table next meeting asking you for permission to go to district court to get permission to deal with the building going down. Because that's, we don't have any authority to do that. Typically, you know, I'll give you one quick example, if somebody's house burns down, typically what I'll do is I'll send a letter to the owner of the house and say, you have thirty days to tear this house down, otherwise I'll be going back to you to get permission to tear it down, because you can't leave a house set, well, this is a building that's been sitting for for years. But he, you know, it is what it is. But but that was an invitation, I think, for us to sit down and negotiate with him. And then we we definitely know how that works.
Yeah.
And then he he just needs to get out.
Yeah, we just need to keep addressing it, keep keep working with him on it, not to say put the pressure, but to basically put pressure to say, hey, we need to find you some alternatives to do some stuff, which I think he's willing to do, but we need to try and work with him to get him, especially living somewhere else at least.
Yeah, for sure.
If you need someone from council or something, I would certainly be available for to sit in with that on those meetings.
Me as well.
And Kevin, okay, there we have a volunteer. Okay, anything else, citizen comments, or I mean, city manager report, let's start over here. Anything else? Any other thing to come before the council? Great, park tour? Little league game? Meeting adjourned.
Eagles park, we're going to meet first. There you go, there you go, you're just going to beat us, do it.